At six. At six thirty one. Uh, call the board of selection meeting to order. Uh, this meeting is being recorded and the minutes are. Being done, um. By. Gale Hunter. Um. And. The first. What are the businesses, any public input on items that are not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. The chair would like to, uh. Announce that there has been a slight change in our agenda for tonight. Um, that was posted late this afternoon. Um, that we are adding an executive session. From which we will not return to regular meeting. Um, regarding, uh, the consideration of the lease of real estate. So. Since that, uh, particular item is. Not a open public meeting. Um, but part of our agenda. They asked Mr. Fishfield to please put that on the agenda for tonight. Alright, so. Our first regular agenda item. Would be a discussion of dispatch. And in particular, back in a meeting that we had, I believe in October. Um, we asked, uh, Chief Fitzgerald to. Um, put together some information for us regarding. Dispatch and particularly around the issue of. Um, second calls. Uh, calling in a second dispatcher in particular. And. Specific issues were to define what triggers brings in a second dispatcher. How many times in the past three years was the second dispatcher called in? How long and why the second dispatcher was called in for? Um, the average turnaround time for emergency vehicles to be rolling in town. And a piece of information that Chief Fitzgerald doesn't have, which is the average turnaround time. For emergency vehicles to be rolling for nine one one region. Um, that's not a separate piece of information, I don't believe. So, uh. Todd, you've provided us with, uh, a memo about this. And, uh, do you want to kind of give an overview of this?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so I'm sure you had time to read my, uh, memo dated back December eighth. Um, so the memo kind of outlines the info that, uh, you just mentioned. Includes the dispatch times and averages them out, uh, to break them down, uh, into three different categories and. Categories, and this includes both police and, uh, fire, uh, units. It's an average of both. But I, uh. Microsystems, who's our RMS, uh, provider, thought that that was the best way to, uh. Get the best picture of, of, of the average times if we included both police and, and fire. So, um, as you can see in, in the memo, uh, on the first page, I, I included the, uh, request to arrival time. So that's when the phone call comes in to the time a, uh. Public safety unit, police or fire would, would arrive to the scene. It's the average dispatch to arrival time. So the time the, uh, call taker puts it out over the air to the arrival of the police or fire unit. And the average time on scene that the, uh, police, both police and fire units, uh. Are, are at the, uh, the, the exact call. Um, next, we kind of looked at the use of the emergency callback procedure, uh, when it was used over the last three years. So I kind of outlined the three different incidents that we found in our, in our records. Of when, uh, this procedure was actually put into place. Uh, so just a note on that, and I didn't put that in my, in my memo is, is, this is. This is times when the, the, when, when the procedure was actually used by the dispatcher. Um, there have been other times, uh, many other times that you, you know, I'd have to go back and s- see. Uh, what the calls were, but when, uh, a situation came in and there were extra staff like myself or Lieutenant McCoy that were in the building. Uh, that could jump in and assist the dispatcher, uh, we know within a matter of a few seconds. Um, lastly, we attempted to find out how many times, uh, the nine one one rolled over to our backup, uh, Brockport. Uh, Katie, our lead dispatcher was contacted State nine one one help desk. And, uh, it took a while for them to get back to us, but they got back to us sometime around December twentieth. I think I emailed you, Jeff, that, uh, result. But, uh, unfortunately, that's something they do not track. Uh, I did follow up with Chief Horvath in Rockport. Uh, he reports no recent, uh, calls in his record management system. And feels that the sometime, uh, what happens very infrequently if it happens, uh, at, at all. So, uh, with that, that's probably a good summary of the memo that I provided you.
Okay. Um. Todd, uh. In the emergency callback procedure section of this memo.
Yep.
The three incidents are described. And the third incident. Um, which, um. I believe it was a motor vehicle accident out on one twenty eight. This is the same, I believe it's the same incident that. Led to. The nine wireless calls going into, uh, North Shore Regional. You said the, um, at the end of that sentence, the last sentence in that section, you said mutual. Um, aid was coming from Gloucester and Essex as well. Arrival time of the second dispatcher was approximately. Blank minutes because of extending.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I probably sent you the wrong copy. It was, it was about twenty minutes.
Okay.
Uh, I was the first one to be called on that, and I looked at it today. Uh, I was dispatched at this, at the same time. But I ended up going to the scene because of the officers, uh, on scene were requesting, uh, additional help with, uh. Uh, some bystanders, uh, and then, uh. Believe it was a few minutes later. Officer McShane, who lives here in town, was contacted. He ended up, uh, coming in quicker than the dispatcher Chelsea Riley because she was unfortunately tied up in traffic.
Okay. Um. There was one question as well I had, which was, uh. In our meeting when we requested this information. Um, we asked. To have a description of what triggers bringing in a second dispatcher. How does that decision get made?
It's made by the officer in charge of the shift. So it could be anything that he feel, he or she feels that, uh. Uh, a call that comes in would need a second dispatcher. So there's no specific guidelines. It's basically left up to the, uh, discretion of the officer in charge of the shift.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions from other board members for Chief Fitzgerald on this?
Yes. Or I just have one other comment, uh, Jeff, uh, just to give you a little clarification on that last comment. Um. We had the power outage today and the officer in charge of the midnight shift called in the second dispatcher. So it was something to do with that, with the numerous phone calls that, that, that we got, we called in a second dispatcher today. So it, it could be anything from a major incident to, uh, a, a call where we know that there's, or that there's going to be, uh. You know, many phone calls coming into nine one one.
Yep, okay. Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. John Round.
Yeah. Uh, thanks, Chief. Couple of, couple of questions. Um, do you have any data on response times from surrounding community, communities? I'm trying to put the numbers in context and I can see what, what you've got here. But I'm just curious what the response times might be for other communities that also have local dispatch.
Uh, no, I don't have that, but it's easy enough for me to reach out to other chiefs to, you know, to see if they can give me that information.
That'd be great. I, I'm, I'm curious, and I know that the size of the community and there are other factors that, that play in there. But it would be good to have some sort of context there.
Yep.
Um, and in your first paragraph, you would mention that, or I guess, uh, the, the, the people, microsystems who provided the numbers. Said that, uh, to split out between fire and police would skew numbers. Is that because the first responders are coming from different places? I mean, I assume fire is always coming from the fire department, but.
Yeah.
Police could be coming from everywhere, anywhere.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's typically, I think the response times could be. Different if it was in the middle of the night or if it was in, in the daytime. So I think i- an average of both or a, a combined average was the best way to look at it.
Okay, in the daytime, you have more, more officers on duty who are probably closer to wherever that issue is.
Could, could, could be, or the fire department could be out and, you know, in about two, so.
Okay, all right. Um. That's, that's it for me. No, I mean, this is, uh, this is informative. It's good, but I would like to know kind of numbers from other communities. Pick them.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Uh, Rockport's a pretty good example. I'm sure Chief Horvath would be able to provide that to me.
Thank you.
And?
Yeah. Um, I'd like to. Underline, uh, John's question about, um, why the numbers are combined. Particularly since in this case we have two chiefs who have different ideas about how they. And of the two different departments, and if. You've averaged the numbers, so I can't tell the difference between, you know, whether, whether, uh, the fire chief is very sensitive to, to time. And I, I, I would like to see the separate numbers. The other is just anecdotal. Um. It was probably a couple of years ago, I called nine one one to say that there were. Kids in trucks tearing up Tac, Tac's Point Park. And the dispatcher said, well, I'm from Rockport and I don't know where Tac's Point Park is.
I find that.
And those are my two comments.
Mr. Boiling.
Um. So question about reading the table here. So the average request to arrive on the address dispatch to arrival. The average request to arrival is the time when the, between when the call is initiated and when, you know, units arrive.
Yeah, that's correct.
And dispatch to arrival is the transit time of the units once they've started rolling.
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay, correct. So, so then for two thousand eighteen, an average amount of time. On the phone with the dispatcher before units roll, about a minute, one point one minutes. Point nine minutes in two thousand nineteen, kind of a jump in two thousand twenty.
Yeah, that's because of the different dispatch protocols that Chief Beardsley and I put in.
Yeah. And then something a little bit lower in, in two thousand twenty one. Okay, thank you. Uh, that was my question for now.
Chief, is there any way of finding out, uh. On these incidents that you've reported? Where a dispatcher was brought in? Um, I know there's no way of finding out in terms of what happens right within the office. Um. But, uh, what time of day these happened? It's one of the decisions that we're going to be faced with if we stay in house is, um. Do we need somebody twenty four seven? Um, a second dispatcher twenty four seven, or is there a time? When calls are heavier? More likely to involve or invoke a second dispatcher?
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you right now, the, the, um. The January twentieth of twenty nineteen was overnight, I believe. The, the Old Essex Roadhouse Fire was in the late evening and the, uh. Uh, August fourteenth motor vehicle accident was in the evening as well. I can get you the exact times, but that's from my recollection.
Okay.
I, I have another question, Jeff.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, uh, chief, a question on, on Rockport. So based on your information, really not much has rolled over to Rockport at all, at least in, in recent years. But if it does roll over to Rockport, they, they cannot get in touch with our radio dispatch system, correct?
They can get in touch by phone. They can get in touch on the police side, on the, uh, Bayburn North District, which, uh, every other. Um, department around here has, and I'm not sure about the fireside, but I think they can, they, they can, uh, get in touch through District Five.
All right, so there, there's, there, there is a way to get in touch. What does it get? You mean you have to network through someone else or it's just another system?
No, you just call on the Bayburn side. It's a, it's a different frequency. That's like, uh, uh, the old intercity, uh, radio system that they can call direct.
Okay, so they can get in touch with, say, the, the officer on, on, on the street in, in town. If, if they need to, based upon what the call requires.
They can get in touch with the dispatch and also, uh, if the officer on the street, if he's monitoring the, uh. The, uh, Bayburn. If he's in, if he's on portable, he's not monitoring it most of the time. If he's in the cruiser, he is.
Okay, all right. So there, there is a system. Well, if it rolls over to Rockport, that's because the current dispatcher. Is probably busy with something else. That's probably not a. An alternative. You'd really want to try and chase someone else down. Would that be correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, so, but you've got a system. I'm just wondering, staying in house, we, we, we need to have, if it stays in house, we need to have some sort of a. Robust system to cover that sort of situation, at least in the short term, till a second dispatcher can show up.
Yeah, uh, you know, that's, that's correct. Most of the time, if we have, uh. Uh, a major incident, other departments monitor or scan our, our main frequencies and they would offer their assistance if needed.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
And?
Yeah, um. Something to think about as we're thinking about the possibility of. Staying in house and adding a part, uh, heading, adding coverage. Is that when, uh, Chief Fitzgerald and, and Lieutenant McCoy are available. Which I assume is Monday through Friday. Daytime. Um, they're there and can step in. So perhaps we have to, if we're thinking about adding. Another. Person for a couple of shifts or a shift, um. Maybe it makes sense to, to bring them in at night rather than during the day. Um. Basically. And, and. I, I'd like to emphasize that. What Chief Fitzgerald said, that, that the frequency that. As John said, calling dispatch when dispatch is already too busy to take calls doesn't seem like a good idea. And you have a frequency that you might be able to get somebody. In a police car if they happen not to be on their portable, doesn't sound like a very reliable system either. That's it for me.
Okay, any further questions for Chief Fitzgerald or, uh. Regarding this data that he's provided to us. I want to thank you, Todd. I know that. It took some time to put this together and. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll get the other information. I'll, I'll do some research with the other towns that are similar size, uh, uh. To us and get that back to you as soon as I can.
And also a breakout of, uh. Of times. By fire and by police.
Yeah, okay. I'm sure microsystems will be able to provide, provide that to me.
Okay. Um. Chief Clear.
Yeah, if I could just, uh, comment on a couple of things. Um, I'm happy to go back through our record keeping and get the, uh, actual fire department times. Cause we record all the times. Um, based on a timestamp recorder that we have in order to enter them into our recording software. So I could see if I can go back through if, if. Our reporting software has the ability to do that, which I believe it does. So I, I can, I can certainly break that out. From, from my end. Um, couple of the other things, um. Rockport should be able to, um, communicate on District Five, which is the mutual aid frequency. But again, as was pointed out. That would be another thing if the dispatcher was already tied up, that they would have to answer if they were answering phones. And already doing fire and police radio for a major event. So if, if Rockport was trying to contact, that would just be another. Another phone ringing or another radio going off, the dispatch would have to. Uh, pay attention to. Um, with respect to the twenty minute callback, uh, for the second dispatcher. Um, I know Chief Fitzgerald mentioned that. Officer McShane was able to come in because he lived in town. I believe he realized there was a problem. Before he got the phone call based on his estimation because traffic had backed up. And he either called to inquire what was going on or headed into the police station, knowing that there was probably some major event going on. And if his twenty minute response was quicker than. Another dispatcher coming in, a lot can happen on the fire ground in the first twenty minutes. Where we need a dedicated dispatcher to the fire scene. A lot of the May Day incidents are occurring within the first fifteen minutes. Of fire apparatus getting on scene. And with respect to what time of day the calls are. Um, those were three that required, uh, a second dispatcher. But that could be at any time. That could be in the middle of the day where Chief Fitzgerald and Lieutenant McCoy are needed on scene. Due to the magnitude of the event. I know the chief has responded out to the scene many, many times. And in, and you know, you can place statistics on that, but it's not a guarantee. It could be one o'clock on a Sunday morning. It could be four o'clock on a Friday. It could be. Any given time, and that's why we're advocating for two dispatchers twenty four seven. Cause nobody knows exactly when that's going to happen.
Okay.
So. But I'll be happy to provide those numbers. I. Felt like initially that the board's questions were directed to Chief Fitzgerald on the. Just pertaining to the dispatch end of things and wasn't aware that. The fire call response was going to be part of that, otherwise I would have prepared something.
Yeah, most of the questions were, um. You're, you're accurate in that. Most of the questions were very specific to. Um, to dispatch. Um, and particularly second dispatch. Um. Being called in. Uh.
On average, we're on the road within a minute of receiving the calls. Two minutes on the outside, depending upon. Which apparatus we need to take, because we kind of have to gauge that based on the type of calls and pick between several different apparatus. So that's the only thing that really slows us down, getting out the door. And then it's travel time from there to the actual incident.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board, questions from the board? Um. The second part of this agenda item is the status of the feasibility study. Um, that's being conducted by, uh, the regional center. And I wonder if, uh, Greg could give us an update on that.
I'm sure. Thank you, Jeff. Um, so the, uh, center has been collecting data and sort of statistics and equipment listings of our current operations. Um, both departments and I have filled out the various requested, uh, spreadsheets, filling in the requested information. Um, we are meeting with them next week to go over, um, some additional questions that they have. Um, as they, uh, finish up their data collection, I would expect them to have a report from them. Um, certainly by, uh, by the middle of February. Um, I think at the latest, it might be a little earlier.
Okay. Any comments, questions from the board on that? Okay, um, I'm not going to open this one up to public comment because, um. This is more of an update on some information for the board. Um, and. I think we need to have more information together before we have. A more, uh, public oriented discussion of this. So. I'm going to move on to the next item. Uh. Which is COVID updates, um. Including hybrid meetings. In light of the surge. In light of yet another surge. Mr. Fetishfield, would you like to take off on this one?
Uh, sure. So I think as, as most folks know, the Board of Health did vote to, uh, re-impose, re-impose the, the mask mandates. In, uh, public spaces and door spaces. Uh, that was effective last week. And, um, we, we have had, um, a bit of a surge in town, uh, last Friday and Saturday. I think there were. Some forty odd, uh, new reported cases in, in less than forty eight hours. Um, so we are definitely feeling the impacts of, of, um. Of, of the surge of Omicron becoming, uh, the dominant, uh, dominant strain of the, of the. Of the virus. Um, the good news is that we continue to see relatively mild cases in town. Um, and so it seems like the vaccines and boosters are, are doing their job, keeping people on the hospitals for the most part. Um, so that is good news. Uh, the bad news is that it, it is very contagious and easily spread. Um, and thus, uh, rationale for. For requiring masks to be worn when indoors in, in public spaces. Um, hopefully that can help, uh, tamp down the spread of what is otherwise a very, um, easily spread. A barrier at this time. Um, the, the board also adopted, uh, protocols for enforcement if that should be needed. Though the emphasis continues to remain on education and, uh, reminders. Um, but if indeed there are some recalcitrant repeat offenders, then there's the ability, uh, to impose a fine. Um, if, if that were to become necessary. The hope is that that isn't necessary. In the past. Um, we've had pretty good compliance overall. Um, and so we expect that, uh, we expect that to continue. Um, some additional information, uh, as folks may know, the state did provide. Uh, free testing kits to about a third of the communities in Massachusetts. Those communities with higher populations of, of, um. Lower income residents. Uh, we did not qualify for that first round, though we, we can take advantage of. Um, bulk purchasing. Um, of test kits and we are working, um. With some of our neighboring communities, uh, to pull together in order. That we might be able to make available, um, to folks who, who would benefit from that in town. Um, so we are, as I say, working with some of our neighboring towns, uh, to pool an order. You have to have a minimum size of your order. Um, typically you have a minimum of a pallet. And, uh, some seventy five hundred kits each containing two tests is, is the minimum size. So, and that would be certainly more than we, we could use. And, um, and the expense of that. So we were looking to, to partner with some of our neighboring communities. Ipswich has initiated an effort. Um. Um, and we were, we were in contact with them today and hoping to, to piggyback on their order and get some kits in. That would be available for us. Um, in addition to what people may be able to purchase at, uh, at local pharmacies. Um, though that can be hit or miss. There, they have been in very high demand. That demand is likely to. To drop off a bit now with the holidays, uh, behind us. And. So the, the piece that Jeff just mentioned, the issue of hybrid meetings, we, we are slated to proceed with that. We finally have. The technology and, uh, um, some staffing from, um, sixteen twenty three studios to do, to do the hybrids. Um, I posed the question as to whether or not we may need to hold off a little bit. Um. Waiting for the surge, hopefully to, to fade back a bit. Um. The hope is that as rapid as the surge has climbed, its decline will be just as quick. We don't know that yet. Has been, it has been the experience in some other countries. So we will, time will tell whether or not that is the case with us. But assuming that it is, and it may be proven to hold off on the hybrid for at least the month of January and to reassess come, come February. So that's a policy decision that I pose for the board to ponder. So that's short of the, short of the, that's the brief version of the update. I know that both Ellen Lovekin and Public Nurse Pam, they have been very busy over the last week despite trying to take some time off, which didn't materialize too well for them. So my hats off to them for their continued hard work responding to, to the new rising cases and giving people guidance and advice as to how to quarantine and to protect themselves and friends and family members. So they continue to work hard doing that.
Greg, I have a question for you regarding the, you were talking mostly about the logistics of acquiring the tests in coordination with other towns nearby. And my question is, is there any discussion of criteria for distribution? And how they would be distributed, distributed and whether it would be a fee or any of that?
Right. So I think the primary focus would be working with Council on Aging and the Health Department on high need cases that they know about and that perhaps some of the, of the social service agencies that work in town would, would, would inform us about. So the focus would be to try to reach out to those folks in higher need in terms of lack of resources to acquire their own. And then a second tier would be to, to then make it more widely available. And we are trying to work out those protocols now. I don't have a, I don't have that laid out for you for presentation tonight, but we'll be working on that and, and present that to you at your next meeting for consideration. So we won't be, if all goes well, we would receive a shipment a week to 10 days from now. And so as I say, the first, first effort would be to reach out to those who have fewer resources to purchase on their own. And then we will be working on protocols for beyond that, and that will be in time for your next meeting.
Okay. Any questions to the board for Greg regarding the COVID update?
Yeah, just one short comment, Jeff. So I, I agree, Greg, with your comment about the hybrid meetings. Wait until February or so. I'd also endorse that I, I would prefer that we not have meetings in person until the mask mandate is lifted by the Board of Health. I meant that may be very similar times. I don't know. Jeff?
Go ahead, Eli.
I would concur with what John said.
So this would be a policy for all boards, correct?
Yes, I think that's the best way to go.
Then I think that that would require a vote.
I move that we disallow hybrid meetings until the Board of Health lifts the mask mandate.
I second that.
Okay, discussion? Do you want to put a limit on that of Greg had suggested mid-February? Or the Board of Health lifting the mask mandate or, and the Board of Health listing the mask mandate?
No, or rather, I would prefer not to be. I, I think tying it to the mask mandate is more likely to be the right answer than just giving an arbitrary date.
I think if we said and, it would be no sooner than February, mid-February, and that the Board of Health would have to remove the mask mandate. My concern is if the mask mandate is removed earlier than that, are we going to hybrid meetings earlier than that?
I don't know why we would prohibit, the rules that we currently have, I think, for hybrid meetings are that everyone on the board must be willing to be present. And I think if the Board of Health has lifted the mask mandate in town, and I assume we would have lifted the mask mandate for town buildings. If that happened tomorrow, I'm sure that the Board of Health is more, is very conservative about their mandate. I just, I don't see the value in adding of a time date, a time, a date to it.
Any other comments or discussion on this issue? Ready to vote? Okay, we'll call vote. Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
And Chair of Vote, cheers. Okay, so that is that we will not have any boards having public meetings, hybrid public meetings until the mask mandate is lifted. Okay. Moving right along. BOS policies. Ann sent a email out the latter part of the afternoon. I'm not sure whether everybody saw it or not. But it was an indication of how she would like to move forward with formatting a side-by-side view of the policies so that we can see where a new policy and an old policy or what the old policy and an edited policy might be. And do you want to make any further comments about that other than what a grueling task it's been? Or in addition to what a grueling task it's been?
This one. I'm, I would like to apologize again. I thought I could get something done, and it turns out that all I got done was a lot of cooking. And I would like to continue to work on it. I think it makes sense to continue to send things out in a, in a, in a PDF just because the formatting is frozen. But what you, what you got was about the same as what was available on December 20th in terms of the suggested changes. I would like to have this put on next meeting's agenda. Perhaps we can actually make a little bit of progress on it.
So between now and our next meeting, the plan of action is that you and Eli and Greg will be meeting to discuss these policies. The beginning policies, we're just trying to get our mojo working here. So the beginning policies that you've presented to us in this handout. I want to briefly just throw this up so that people know what we're talking about. Is that okay, Ann?
Yes.
Let me see. There it is. Okay. So this is the policy as originally archived, and this is the updated proposed policy. And as you go down, we see that there's one after another after another. So it may get a little tricky to share these in a public discussion. If they start to move off being on the same page together, this first one is. But anyway, we'll come to that when we do. But you and and Eli and Greg are going to meet and discuss these policies that we've already started to discuss to try and get down the final language of them.
Okay, we could probably add one more since.
You can add as many as you wish to add. I'm serious. I, I don't want to be, I don't want to be directing the show and micromanaging how this happens. If you feel like you can get more done, I know some of these are going to be, well, that's a no-brainer, we'll just do this, or that's a no-brainer, that doesn't exist. And we have to look at where implementation of the policies is not being followed. What gets referred to as practice, past practice. So I know for myself and probably John and Becky, we really appreciate the efforts that you guys are going to put into this. And we will try and respond by being very gracious and accepting. Okay, is there anything else on the BOS policies that we need to discuss tonight?
Jeff, I just want to, my kudos to Ann to put this together. It's very straightforward. I think we can all understand this is the way it looks and it's pretty easy to follow. I did get a chance to read through and I assume that Ann has just kind of incorporated the various comments that came in without a, an interactive discussion with Eli and, and
It's the case.
Yeah, I assume that's correct, Ann, right? You've just kind of put things together. So this is great. It's great. Look forward to comments and any additional ones you can, you feel to add to the list.
Our goal is to have this done by June. And this, the early ones are faster and more recent ones are going to be a little bit slower.
The, the most recent ones are pretty straightforward. The, there's a long investment policy, two long investment policies, which are remarkably similar, which I believe were drawn up by the, at least approved by the Finance Committee and probably drawn up by some of their advisors. And so those will be easy as will things that are relatively up-to-date and relatively in our, in our minds. It's just some of the intermediate ones that are weird. Let's see what we can do.
And the goal here is not to try and tweak everything and change everything and do little minor edits. The goal here is to make the policies reflect the, the things that need to be done for town government to run. So yeah. And we, is part of your Town Administrators Report talking about the exit interview policy, Greg, or is that something we could discuss here?
You could discuss it here. No, I was, so the update was that we, at your last meeting, you had agreed to put into the personnel policy was a slightly different process for that, and we actually need to advertise that, put a public notice in the paper before you can do that. And that, that did not happen over, over the holidays here.
So, so how does that differ from any other policy? Is it because it's going into the, the policy handbook that that, that notification procedure has to occur?
Right. So the Personnel Handbook has a different amendment process.
Okay.
So that's, that's why.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, we're, we're good to wire, wire over the damn, we'll take care of that. The notification, I assume, is going in this week or next week into the cricket?
Right, exactly.
Okay. And how many weeks does that have to run?
It just needs to run a week.
Just once?
Yep.
Beautiful. Okay, so we could vote. Our final vote on that next week, excuse me, on the 18th.
Correct, yes.
Good. Okay. Moving on, the FY23 budget. Love the term key items. But it's key items for discussion in particular. Position, yes. Eli?
I think you actually can't start the discussion on that yet.
Well, we have time.
We're actually considerably ahead. You can, you can have some discussion, but you're going to need to.
Thank you, Eli. In the timings, Greg was anticipating that we would really dig in on those policies. It's the choice of the board. We can go on to the consent agenda and that's not timed and the, we could do the County Town Administrators Report, but we're not scheduled to start the budget item until 8:05. That's about 45 minutes from now.
I do.
50 minutes. Or we could go back to BOS policies and dig into those policies. It's the board's pleasure.
I'd recommend doing the consent agenda and then the Town Administrators Report.
Agree.
Okay. In the consent agenda, we have several copies of minutes that need to be approved. We have a reserve fund transfer request. And we have the acceptance of the Winthrop Field donation from the Winthrop Trust. So any of those items that people wanted to discuss?
So there's an amendment on the reserve fund request. So the original request was So there's an amendment on the reserve fund request. So the original request was for 10,000. But it looks like with some new health billing that we need to increase that fairly significantly to 25,000, not just 10,000.
Okay. And these funds are for
So these funds are to cover basically medical medical bills for injuries that were incurred on the job.
And what would that's a big flip? What caused the big flip?
Yeah, the the third party monitor administrator of workers comp contacted us today with some additional billing that they they had not been aware of. But they but they recognize them as legitimate legitimate bills.
What is the current state of the reserves?
I don't. I'm trying to recall if we've used any, it's only been maybe 5,000 of 160 that we have.
I thought we had. I thought I thought there was something that we were anticipating.
We are anticipating needing a significant amount of additional funding for legal services. That may require a supplemental appropriation rather than rely on the reserve fund. So we may we may want to ask voters for for additional appropriation at the town meeting to cover this year's legal expenses. The main drivers of that are well, the 40B is certainly a major factor. And some some personnel matters that have required significant legal counsel as well.
Can you explain how the workman's comp? What what's going on? I thought we paid something into a fund and that was like insurance. So why are they billing us separately?
So I can I don't I can have Andrea provide more details than I have off the top of my head. But in essence, we pay and we do pay for workers comp for that mainly for coverage of salaries if necessary. And we we do get reimbursed for some health expenses, but we have to we have very high deductible on the health for for health insurance expenses. So we have catastrophic coverage, basically, but we cover up until that limit. And I just don't recall that limit.
Do we have more on health, you know, accidents on the job than you have experienced in other communities?
No, we've had a rough patch. We have two large cases right now. Let's say that's that's not the norm that we've experienced here. But the the two current cases are unusual for the for the expenses incurred. But I would say overall, I would I would say we're experiencing an abnormally high number of of job related injuries.
So these are transfer requests for the current fiscal year that's going to run out into July. Do we anticipate that there are going to be additional transfer requests surrounding these events?
So this and the the request before you is anticipation, some additional requests. So it is an estimate of what will be needed to finish up the
Do you have a number for what you think the reserve request is going to be for legal?
I don't yet. We were just talking about that today. We were going to add up what we spent to date. And then try to do a projection. We just need to gather up some of the some of the bills paid and take a look at them. So I can have that for you for next time.
Can the legal please wait until July?
Not until July, no.
April.
Yes.
And if the meeting is delayed?
We can with with the reserve fund, we'll probably we'll be able to cover. So the alternative is to use just reserve and then if we have to replenish reserves, then we could do that. But I'm fearful that our burn rate, if it continues as it has been, will take up too much of the reserve.
What is the order of approval of a transfer? And I believe it has to be approved by both the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee.
Correct, yes.
Has the Finance Committee taken it up?
No, they have. It's on the agenda for for this Thursday. So there's there's no prescribed whatever. We typically try to have you approve it first and then the finance. This we've done it both ways.
That's all about I want to beat this horse.
Is there a time pressure, significant time pressure on making these payments?
I mean, we could we could put it off for another two weeks if that's what you're asking. Yeah. I wouldn't go much beyond two more weeks, but but if you'd be more comfortable having some input and getting a little more information on our coverage, you could certainly put this off for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think what I would like is since the number went up to 20,000 and the document that's in our packet that's signed by Andrea is checked in at 10,000, just just to be pedantic. If we could have that updated to 20,000 then reviewed with detail by FinCom first, then it would all be nice and spiffy clean.
Sure, that's fine.
Greg, how long are we anticipating having a high degree of legal expense with SLV?
Well, I would I would say certainly at a minimum through the through the end of the comprehensive permitting process with the ZDA.
And that process is a six month process.
Well, it could well be extended. I could I could well envision that being extended nine, nine to 12 months.
Okay, and since they started at the end of October, beginning of November.
Right.
We're talking about the rest of this fiscal year and into next fiscal year.
Yes.
I'm just thinking about this in terms of appropriations in the budget for legal expenses going before town meeting, not just retroactively, but proactively. We're going to have some we don't know what other kinds of substantial bills we might have given some of the legal cases that we're involved in right now.
Yes, that's quite well taken.
Along those lines, I know that Sarah has said that the planning board is getting a little more active in the legal arena as well. That can be a driver for this also.
Yeah, I think she probably coming.
I mean, zoning board. Zoning board, I'm sorry.
Yep. So yeah, so some of these higher expenses are related to to ZDA cases, some other, some of its comcom as well. So the the preliminary budget did increase the legal services line, but it deserves another look.
Does this all come out from the same pot or is this kind of in different places depending upon which committee or legal services or legal services? That's it to the town.
Yeah, we lump them together at this point.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to pull the reserve fund transfer request from the consent agenda. And hear it again on the 18th. So that the the correct amount is presented in the warrant article, not the warrant article, the warrant request. Move on to the third item is the acceptance of the Winter Winthrop Field donation from the Clara Winthrop Charitable Trust. And I just want to highlight that this is an $11,500 contribution is made payable to the town to cover issues related to the upkeep and maintenance of the Winthrop Field that comes from the trust annually and is very much appreciated in terms of our costs related to that property. So we thank Mr. Brown, Peter Brown, who is trustee, who signed off on this and I'd like to just acknowledge him and write him a letter thanking him in addition to the comments that I just made, but I wanted to publicly thank. So any other issues related to the consent agenda?
I think it was in the second set of minutes. There was a reference to lightning, which should have been lighting, because I don't think we want to be encouraging more lightning in town. Especially in light of our problems with National Grid.
Okay, if you can get that to to Gail, I'm sure she can make that adjustment. Any other concerns related to the minutes? Okay.
I I would like to congratulate Gail on on providing an accurate representation of a couple of very long meetings without taking up more than 130 pages. She does a very good job of, in my opinion, she does a very good job of summarizing and hitting the major points. And I'm glad she served. I'm sorry, she's not going to be our secretary anymore.
Here, here. So may I get a you're welcome, Gail. Can I get a motion to pass items A and C on the consent agenda and remove the reserve transfer request until our meeting on the 18th?
So moved.
Okay, so moved by Mr. Round, seconded by Mr. Bowling. Quick roll call vote. Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. All right. Mr. Fishfield, would you like to do your town administrators report? With the bad all changed around tonight?
Yeah, it's a little bit, yeah. So two two major topics, an update on the 40B. People may have heard that the applicant, Mr. Angler, has been barred from submitting new projects to the state based on some inaccuracies in past submitted. And he must submit an affidavit confirming the accuracy of his of his current projects that are in the hopper. There's quite a few before the state, including ours. So he's able to proceed, assuming that he submits that new affidavit. So the ZBA is continuing lining up their peer review experts. They'll be meeting in a couple of weeks again, and we'll have a focus on transportation. The applicant has submitted revised transportation report, traffic analysis. Believe that's been posted to the website or will be shortly if it isn't. And the peer reviewer is working to analyze the the updated report and will be providing feedback to the ZBA at their at their upcoming meeting. The, as you also know, the the ZBA did file a request for safe harbor. And the state did deny that request, finding that that we we as a town have not made sufficient documented progress on on adding additional affordable housing units to our inventory, to what's called the subsidized housing inventory, the SHI. And even though there are some in the works, the the state felt that they were not they were not formally approvable yet, and therefore we do not qualify for the safe harbor. So that's a process that has played out and the ZBA will continue with their their review. Some of the submitted certainly will be scrutinized for for their accuracy to make sure that that there aren't misrepresentations in the application. And so we'll be working with council to to ensure that that is the case. So if the process continues, it'll again evolve over the next few months. And as I indicated just a little earlier, typically applicants and communities agree to extensions beyond the the six month period. That is the goal for completing reviews, depending on the timeliness of responses and the need for additional information that no doubt the ZBA will make to the applicant and how quickly those come back before then, that all plays into the timing of the process and how long it takes overall. And so I would not be surprised if 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 it takes longer than than the six months, we will see how the next few months progress. So that's that's where things stand with the 40B. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them. If not, I can move on to the second item. So the second item is probably not new. So, the second item is probably not new either to folks. You know, we get a fairly steady stream of complaints about. Dogs on the beach and dogs that are not under the control of an owner, which is what our bylaw stipulates. A recent email that was shared with you in your package. Involved an incident where a jogger during evening, or no, because it was very early morning before the sun was up. So, there was not much light. And she was running on the beach and the dog was quite a distance from the owner and pinned the jogger down. You know, the owner couldn't see what was going on, and it was a pretty uncomfortable situation. For the person who was jogging on the beach. So, we get this concern about how much control owners are exerting over their dogs and the interactions that those dogs may have with others. And so, the suggestion here was that perhaps. We consider changing the regulations, the dog. Regulations in our bylaws to require that dogs are unleashed when it's dark out. That's the one suggestion this person made. We have also had numerous requests that, yes, the beach is primarily open to dogs during, you know, the October to April timeframe. But could there be a small section of the beach that is designated as dog free year round? And people have suggested the area, as you face the water. You know, you're standing at the circle of the area to the left. A small portion of the beach over to the rocks, and that. Everything to the right of the circle would remain available for dogs, but that you would sign that. That small area to the left as being a dog free area year round. Again, that's a change to the bylaw that would require a town meeting note. So, I bring these possibilities to you. They've been brought to me on a number of occasions. Most recently, as I say, with the email, and I bring it to your attention, and whether or not you. Feel it would be prudent to pursue these ideas or others, or to have. Police and Park and Rec Committee and Animal Control Board. To take a look at these options and get their feedback, which would be an option for you as well. You know, we don't need to make a decision this evening. I just present them to you, and if you want to put it out as a more formal discussion. As an agenda item, we can in the future.
Hi, Greg. This is John. I think both of these requests seem cogent. They seem reasonable to me. I haven't had this incident with the dog in the dark. I haven't heard that one before. I've certainly been on the beach on a number of occasions in the evening, certainly well after sundown. Doesn't get very dark on the beach, especially if the moon is out. So, to be so black that nobody can see anything seems strange, but maybe in a new moon and a very cloudy situation that can happen. But it seems to me that that would not affect very many people to have a dog on a leash dusk to dawn or something like that. The other situation with regard to having a section of the beach kind of be dog free. Yes, I've had people that have mentioned to me they'd like to be able to sit on the beach someplace and not be constantly. I won't say attacked, but be surrounded by dogs that are running around. Attack is not the word, but dogs running around all the time, and that represents what, maybe twenty, twenty-five percent of the beach, I think? Maybe, maybe less. That doesn't seem to me to be too limiting. I understand that enforcement would be an issue, but a couple of signs, I've got to believe people would in general respect that, but. It certainly needs some public input to just see how controversial this is with folks in general.
So, with regard to the. Leasing in the dark. I think that's worth some debate. I think the other one. The issue of, I think there's two issues actually. One is the issue of. Whether or not it would be prudent to have an area of the beach that's. Dog free at all times, I think. That is just going to generate a firestorm. At town meeting. We. Did away with that firestorm some years ago with the compromise measure that was put in place of half and half. I am. Not looking forward to reopening. The partitioning of that debate. Or the debate that partition. There would have to be a really compelling argument. Around that and how it would be managed before I would support moving forward with that. Discussion. At town meeting. And as for the complaints about people not controlling their dogs on the beach, well, I think. I think it's been a while since we've addressed the notion of the animal control officer. Spending downtime down there. I don't know when the last time they, we had any presence down there. It's, I know it's difficult. But it might be time for a little bit more public outreach from the public safety side.
Agree with Eli. That. The town meetings that considered dogs on the beach. Have always been well attended. And. Long. My, among the concerns about limiting. Dogs to one section of the beach is that it really, my first thought was, well, just put in a fence, but you can't put in a fence into the ocean. It's not gonna work. And I think you would have to have somebody there most days. Before people got the idea that they really had to have their dogs under control and they really needed to keep dogs out of the people area. And maybe we, as Eli suggested, we should start. By having somebody show up from time to time and caution people about letting their dogs run wild.
I mean, there's a number of ways that I could think of that. This situation could be mitigated. One is to have hours at the beach. When no one's allowed on the beach, dog or person. Many public recreation areas close at dusk. All the trustees' recreation areas close at dusk. And. Are open from dawn to dusk, or even open from after dawn to dusk. That's one way to mitigate it.
Closing the beach at dusk would be very unpopular.
May. Closing the beach to dogs at dusk. Is another alternative. The third alternative would be to, which may not be popular with Chief Fitzgerald, is to have the police. Cruise through the parking lot, and if people don't have a sticker and they're not in the out of town designated area. That they get ticketed. Because we have no idea how many of the dogs that are on the beach are dogs that are. Residents walking the dog. And since the whole parking lot is available. If we get stricter about. Out of town residents parking in the out of town resident area, that's ten cars max. Now we cut back on the number of dogs on the beach. Mostly, this is unenforceable. Presents a great deal of. Challenge in terms of any kind of enforcement.
Well. Some of that's true. I mean. Taking the letter that was in our packet this week. Reading that letter, I'm surprised that the individual didn't call the police. Upon, you know, being freed of their predicament. From the description that was in there, I think it would have absolutely warranted police response. And for, I think, again, it's the case that if. If there are people violating rules. Especially if we were to put in place a rule that where dogs had to be leashed if it was dark. Then we are going to rely on reports. And not necessarily the police having omniscience. And I don't think that can be a reasonable expectation that. We will go out and enforce at all times. The prohibition, but the rules put in place a mechanism by which the public can avail themselves of the protection of the rules. But they have to avail themselves of the protection of the rules by calling the police. So, again, I think that's a bit of. Public education.
Okay, I think my reading of that letter was that this woman was really traumatized. She was terrified and didn't feel like she could even reach for her phone when she was face to face with the dog and the owner was nowhere around.
No, but she then said that she talked to the owner afterwards, and she was capable of talking to the owner. She seems like she would have been capable of calling the police at that point. She chose not to. But I, I think that we as, you know, leaders and the police can't really do much about situations like that if people don't. Contact the enforcement agencies when the violation is occurring. We can't realistically be watching that all the time. It's hard for us to respond with any sort of enforcement. Of this when it's addressed as a policy issue. As a complaint to the Board of Select. I mean, we can change the policy, but I think, again, what we really need is. To be able to do some enforcement.
Jeff, I think enforcement is a challenge in all of this, and you're really relying on. The judgment of most of the public to do the right thing most of the time. Enforcement is not going to make much of a difference here because by the time the police shows up or whatever happens, everybody's gone. And there's no, very little information, and there's very little that they can do, I think, to resolve. The situation other than to, you know, make note of it, and if it becomes a trend, then maybe you've got to change the policy if there are too many events here now. Jeff, Greg says he gets several emails on dogs on the beach. Is that per week, per day? I don't know how many times people contact the town hall and say, there's a dog problem here.
Yeah, certainly not weekly.
Okay, well, I just don't know if it's always in the top ten on your agenda.
I would not say that.
Okay, so. You know, these are kind of isolated situations where if something comes up and. And it's so difficult to try and try and deal with them when there's an incident like this, and maybe in two years, there'll be another incident like this. But there was some minor incidents that happened every, I don't know, two or three weeks or a month. I don't, I don't know, and is this? I don't know if this is throughout the whole dog period of, what is it, October to May or whatever it is, April? Yeah.
I don't consider this a minor incident.
No, this is not, this is not minor.
And, and I don't know whether the town has any liability for allowing dogs to be on the beach. Do we need to put up a big sign and say, you know, go on the beach at your own risk? And call the police if you have a problem? It's, it's. I mean, I've been a dog owner and I've had my dog down on the beach and. And I've seen dogs running all around without anybody anywhere near them. My, at the time, hundred and one year old mother-in-law was knocked down by a dog. From behind, who came flying up behind her and just jumped up on her back and knocked her face down in the sand. And the person, you know. Was thirty yards away and came running up and said, oh, sorry. I mean, the situations that can happen, John, can be extremely serious. Luckily, my mother-in-law was not injured. Seriously injured. She was bruised, but not seriously injured. But this guy's attitude was, you know, sorry. It brings out a lot of passion in town meetings for a reason. And. And we can't get down to any specifics in terms of. Considering this as a policy or an enforcement problem and making recommendations to the chief of police or. Making recommendations for policy changes. In this context, because this is in the town administrator's report. But I'm, I'm really concerned when I see an email like that, even if it's one a year. When I see an email like that, because that's, that's trauma. That's traumatizing to have that happen. To not feel like you can even reach for your phone. And so, what if you can, your phone may not work? Anyway. We're still about four minutes ahead of our time on the budget items.
I think it's fine to start. You'll still be talking about it if anyone is coming on expecting it.
I'm prepared to do that now, Greg. Ah, no, I know what I can do. Well, that's, that's even further down the journey. So we could take up the water resource protection task force. Okay, so let's, let's, uh.
Were we going to talk about the budget?
Yes, we're going to talk about the budget. Um, Greg, do you want to frame this?
So at the, uh, sure. The special meeting you had in mid-December, you had a joint session with the finance committee presented, presented to you and the finance committee, the preliminary budget, you haven't had a chance to, um, to talk about it since then. I'm interested in hearing, um, some reaction as to what you see as some of the more important uh, issues, concerns, uh, as, as you review the budget. Obviously, we have some pretty significant discussions that will revolve around staffing, particularly on, on public safety, um, involving the board of health, um, involving, um, police and, and fire. Um, so I, I know that those are issues that will be needing to address. Um, it might be helpful to hear from you how you would like to tee those up with additional background information you may like to have, might like to have. Um, in order to help the decision-making process as we go through the budget. Um, on those staffing issues in particular, but also, um, helpful to hear what other areas that you feel um, deserve, um, more review, more information, et cetera. So I'm looking for, um, some general feedback on, on the preliminary budget as, as presented to you. And obviously this is, um, one of many opportunities to discuss, but I wanted to get the, get the ball rolling and hear some of your, your early thoughts and what information or end or process that you'd like to undertake uh, between now and the first of March, when we need to, need to have a final budget, um, adopted and ready to go before the voters.
Okay, I will open it to board members for their comments.
I, there are two things that I think we should consider seriously that as far as I can tell are not in the budget. One is, um, and it, and maybe it's dealt with, with, with other funds, but one is, um, improving the, uh, seawalls around the, uh, wastewater treatment plant. I think that's the most vulnerable part of town. Um, if we have a bad storm, it, it is the place where the water could do the most damage. Um, another is, I'd like to see us move forward toward a harbor master's office and bathrooms. Again, engineering study. Um, but I think that what we need to do first on that, which is not strictly budget, is make a decision where to put it. Um, there is controversy there and if we let it wander off, um, there are the people who want it here and the people who want it there. And I think we are the people who should make that decision. I'd also like to know what the board of, what extra funding there is for the board of health and what that would cover.
Yeah, we are still waiting for details, um, the, the new funds that the state is making available for, for boards of health. The recently passed legislation included 200 million for boards of health. Um, but we are waiting the guidelines as to how, how one qualifies for those dollars or or some, will some of it be distributed on a formula basis, basically to all communities? And part of it, uh, on a competitive grant basis, depending on proposals, we're not, it's not clear yet. And so hopefully that'll become, um, clear in the next few weeks as they release those guidelines.
I, I have a question with regard to the board of health, Jeff, if I may. And Greg, is, have we got some sort of a plan? Of, I, I won't say plan of action, but a projected strategic plan for the board of health is how that would look with additional person or implementation of, uh, a, a more robust program than what we have now going forward. Um, at, at this point, I'm not sure how, what our needs are now. And given the situation we're in, how that's going to be justified, say, I don't know, two years from now, when we're not necessarily in the middle of a pandemic. And is there a role that new people play when that's not going on?
So I think the thoughts on that are still coming together from the board of health perspective. I think they, in general, see the need for a full-time health agent. Um, and that agent then would need to, need some staff support, some administrative support. You know, clerk, administrator, assistant role. You know, whether that's part-time, you know, halftime, three-quarter time, you know, that hasn't been fully, fully vetted yet. And then the question of how many hours should, should there be for, for the public health nurse? Um, again, I think they are, um, trying to come up with some, um, guidelines for that. Um, so again, I think we will hear more from them in the, in the coming weeks. Um, but I think it's fair to say that, um, at a minimum, they would see the need for, um, a full-time health agent and, um, and office support for the, for the agent.
Is, is it fair to say that, uh, it's been understaffed for some time? I'm just again, looking down the road as things settle down with public health concerns with the pandemic. There are other things that were underserved or not done at all that should have been done perhaps all along had we had the staffing to do that that can, that can justify that person's time.
Right, certainly. Historically, at least in the last, you know, 15 years or so. Um, it's really been a pretty lean shoestring operation. Contracting out a lot of the Title V work. Rather than doing that in-house. So, you know, there can be some shifting of duties potentially. So a combination, so some of the dollars could be freed up instead of doing all of the Title V work as, as vendor contracting out to, under some of that work could be done by an in-house health agent. Again, I think it would be good to, uh, to have the board of health put together a more complete proposal and, and present that to you.
I think that in terms of all the personnel needs. Oh, to come back to John's question, um, there wasn't full-time health agent in Manchester in the nineties. And, um, that person, uh, stepped down and in the interim, the board hired consultants to take care of the, uh, inspections that were necessary for, uh, restaurant, uh, businesses, um, and other health inspections, food inspections, things like that. And, and, uh, and separately septic inspections. And so we have two consultants who work with the board now. Um, and one of the things that Greg's referring to is, is possibly shifting, um, those responsibilities directly onto a new health agent, a full-time health agent, Essex has a full-time health agent. And, um, the, the need for a full-time health agent, um, has been, uh, really manifest during the management of, of the pandemic. But I don't think that it's just, oh my God, you know, we need this help and in, in two years, John, you're, you're being very optimistic, I think. When this pandemic slides into and being just endemic. You know, we're, we're going to have, we're going to have a lot of different kinds of health problems that we're going to have to face in, in our community. And COVID has just been just been one of them. But I think in terms of both the health department request and the police request and fire department request, that we're going to need to look at transitional plans. We're not going to be able to meet requests, meet these requests. In one fell swoop and it's tricky. The, the funding that Greg's referring to can help us get geared up in the health department. But we need to have a transitional plan for how the town assumes responsibility for that when those funds go away. And they will. So I think that's really one of my feedbacks to you and to the department heads that are now going before FinCom this month is to, um, have an idea of a multi-year plan. Um, for meeting that the staffing needs to are being closed. Yeah.
The board of health covers more areas than most of our committees and boards. And I would think that the specific skills you need for Title V examination and those that you need for providing vaccinations and those that you need for inspecting restaurants would be hard to find in one person. And maybe this is a place where contracting out to specialists will give us better service than trying to have one person with adequate skills in many areas. So I'm that's just another way of looking at, at that issue. I don't, maybe Greg, I'm sure Greg has more experience and perhaps there are people who, who go to college in, in Title V and dirty restaurants and it's giving injections, but I haven't run that, run into that in the curriculum that I've looked at.
Yeah, no, I, I would agree. It's, uh, not that fulbre.
And it's not necessarily a college curriculum. Um, the state of Massachusetts is looking into requiring certification for inspectors. Right now, there aren't requirements, specific requirements for these inspectors, um, that that go across the board. So.
I think the town would be worse served by having someone who's not a specialist.
Well, but I think that if they're certified, they're going to, they're going to have the skills.
And since there's no certification yet, there's no one who is certified in all areas.
So there are, there are certified sanitarians. Um, they're not going to have the, uh, the nursing credentials to do shots. That's more on the, on the Title V and inspection, uh, restaurant inspection areas. But, um, in, in general, the, the lack of specific criteria for certification has been a problem for the state. And they, there are proposals to correct that.
They have certifications for barbers. You have to be licensed to be a barber in this state, but you don't have to be licensed to inspect septic.
So I think there's, um, some important work that still needs to be done and, um, we'll be working with the board of health and trying to pull together some more specific details for you.
I think what's really from my point of view, what's really most critical is, is taking a step back from details of certification versus and, and consultant versus health agent employee. And from three new firefighters, two new policemen, uh, whatever the requests are that are coming out of public safety. To have a multi-year goal and a multi-year plan. So that this is not all being taken down in one year. And so it gets thrown out again and we go another two decades without a health agent. And the decisions about dispatch have to be molded into this budget as well. So we're going to need to be making a decision about dispatch and how we're going to move forward on that. Um, because we do have to move forward. Whether it's to move forward to regional or to move forward to in-house. If we're moving forward in-house, how we budget that and it can't be next year, it needs to be beginning this year. If it's staying in-house. It's kind of like we've done enough work on this to know we can't kick the can.
May I make a few comments on some other items?
You certainly may, sir.
So it's already been mentioned, but, uh, obviously the legal, um, budget projections are going to be of some, um, interest. Pretty sure. Pretty sure FinCom will be taking a pretty close look at those. One thing that hasn't really been talked about too much, and I think it's a relatively small item, but, um, we might want to pay attention to it is, um, trees. We took out a lot of trees past year or so, more tree removal requests, um, than I've seen in quite a long time. And friends of the trees will replace a bunch. We did increase the budget a few years ago for, uh, it was actually last year for pruning trees. Um, I recall that when we put, uh, I think Woody back on CPC, he'd said that he, um, intended to bring up the issue of intended to bring up the issue of tree replacement and tree work at the CPC. I'm not sure what the status of that is. But I wonder if there should be a little bit more analysis done around what what additional tree work we might need or want to do in town within next year. And again, I know that's not a big dollar item on our current budget. But that might be something we want to increase, given the number of number, the increasing number of tree removal requests, which are not something that we generally like to see.
Yeah, I would add to that, that it's not just tree removal requests, but trees that are damaged by more powerful storms that we're seeing. And the feedback we've gotten from people over on Jersey Lane about large branches coming off of trees down into the road during storms. That are so far up that trimming is really a challenge.
Yeah, and I I don't think this is necessarily a budget issue, but I'll just make an observation. And there have been a number of times when developers have done come come to us with tree removal requests. And we've declined them. Asking them instead to in take care to work around the trees as much as possible. And we've kind of been counsel against that to some extent, or we're given caution by the tree warden that that oftentimes won't work out very well, or he doesn't, you're not sure it's gonna work out very well, because those trees are gonna be impacted heavily by the heavy equipment moving around on the the lot. And generally, we've been, it's been proven that he's right, and we come back a little while later and those trees end up being they fall victim to the construction that was done around them. And so it becomes kind of moot when the developer comes and says, hey, I want to remove this healthy tree, and we say no. And again, I don't think it's necessarily a budget issue, but I'm not sure that we have the right tools in our toolbox to deal with those situation as far as managing what happens when developers tear down existing property and build a couple of new houses on those properties. And I think that's gonna increase, and that's gonna continue to happen in town.
So you thinking about policy issue here, Eli, or bylaw change?
I don't know actually what it is. Realist, really, what I prefer is that I'd prefer that there be some constraint placed on a developer says, yeah, yeah, we know you're gonna take out these trees, it's gonna wreck them. You're gonna do this development on this property, it's your right to do that, but you're gonna wreck these town trees. You need to do something about it, and it's not something the planning board takes into consideration all that much, I don't think, when they do their review of site plans. And I'm not sure that they have the the ability to constrain a developer. Or to make them bond for replacement of the trees or but I think it might be I I'd like to get a little bit more educated on what we could do to limit the damage when those situations arise, opposed to just reacting a couple of years later and say, oops, well, those trees gotta come down. And then somebody's gonna plant new ones from friends of the tree a couple of years later, and then we've lost six years or more, and some very large healthy trees are gone.
So Greg, have you integrated that comment, those comments into your financial plan for this year?
So, you know.
I I agree with, I agree wholeheartedly with what Eli's talking about, but boy, it's a really challenging thing to figure out how we address that, and it seems like it's a policy slash bylaw issue.
Yeah, and also through the through the permitting process of new projects, I think there are some some things we can take a harder look at.
Any of the board comments on the budget issues we've been discussing? Okay, I have a hand raised by someone who's labeled as JB. Could you unmute yourself and identify who you are and where you live in Manchester?
Yeah, good evening, Greg. Boda Selectman, Jack Burke, sixteen Ocean Street. Just a quick point of information regarding the trees. The CPC does have an application before us for twenty-five thousand dollars from the Friends of Trees for tree work to be done over the next year or so. In addition, they have eleven thousand that was awarded to them at the last town meeting for for tree work around Singing Beach and Tux Point. CPC money CPA money can only be used for recreational areas and our parks and cemeteries. Unfortunately, we cannot use CPA funds for replanting trees that come down on our regular shade trees. That's all I wanted to bring up to you.
Thank you.
Jack, could those funds be used if the tree came down in a public park?
Yes. And we have been doing some, actually some major pruning with trees that were causing issues at Maskinoma Park, Chakoria Tree. Did get a contract from the DPW using CPA funds to take down trees that were dangerously over the playground and and walkways around the around the park. And we, and part of the the long-term plan is to continue to do that. Friends of Trees are are interested in not only taking down the bad trees, but replacing them where the DPW themselves is not a tree planting group. So I'm not sure if that answers your question.
It does. Again, there would need to be a plan for tree planting within public areas that Friends of Trees might be able to facilitate.
Yes, so Sue Midamire is planning to bring to our meeting next Thursday some plans for how they would expect to use the CPA funds moving forward before we vote on that application. And specifically as where they would go. Some, they don't know where they would go yet, because some of the trees probably haven't been identified yet. But it would be for our for CPA dollars, our parks, our cemeteries, all recreation areas. Basically, open space places used by the public. Not our street shade trees.
And that's on Thursday the sixth?
I'm sorry?
Is that on your next meeting, Thursday the sixth?
No, Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday, the thirteenth.
The thirteenth. Okay.
And that'll be at five thirty.
Well, good, so you'll get that in before FinCom meets?
Yes. And Mark Weld is our FinCom rep, he's well aware of what we're planning to vote on.
Okay, good. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Jim.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments that board members want to make regarding priorities in the budget? Greg, is there anything else you need? I mean, that's a silly question, but.
This is a good start, thank you. This is, this gives me plenty to work with.
Okay, good. All right, so our final item, we're running about six minutes late on final item on on the active agenda, which is Water Resources Protection Task Force appointments. And I have a comment and a request for appointment tonight. The comment is that Steve Gang put together some text in terms of advertising for at-large members of the task force, and I had a conversation with Tiffany today about that. And she's going to put together a some, take the text and put it together in her form, which is usually much better than anything that I write or Steve writes. And publish it on the web, the Facebook page, and not this week, but next week in the cricket. We need originally, it set it up as half a dozen at-large community members. Steve's concept of that is that some people could come and go. Work for for a month or so on this and and on a specific task and rotate out, and other people might come in. But we're working on getting some candidates for at-large. And we'll have more on that on the eighteenth. Breaking news is tonight, the Open Space and Recreation Committee voted or nominated Helen Bethel as a member of the task force and Olga Hayes as the alternate for for OSRC on the Water Resource Task Force. So we need to formally vote them in and take a motion to that effect.
Move, we appoint Helen Bethel and as the primary representative and Olga Hayes as an alternate on from the open source, open space recreation. A committee to the Water Resource Protection Task Force.
Beautifully started. Eli said. Okay, any discussion of this? All right, roll call vote, Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. One, return a vote, yes. And a big thank you to Ellen for stepping up to join the task force and I had sent Olga an email with the deliverables and all that information that we had in the memo from Steve. So she knows, I think, a little bit about what she's getting to. That gives us representatives. I also put out an email to Paula Philius, Chair of the Board Health, that we need an alternate member from them. I think we've already voted in to nominate the board's nomination of Peter Col Russo as their member on the task force. We voted in our planning board reps last time, we voted in our reps last time. So that's all the committee represented representatives for the task force. Once we have an alternate from Board Health. We just need to fill out those at-large members, and we may be filling them out for a long time. This project's slated to go on for twelve to eighteen months. And as I mentioned, Steve's idea of having people work with the working excuse me, work with the working group to, in short, short bursts. As their time is available and they can commit. Okay. That's the active agenda that we have for tonight. In terms of other matters, this may not have reasonably been anticipated by the chair, I have none. At this point, I would like to get a motion to adjourn into executive session. Per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A. Six, to consider lease of real estate. In executive session, not to return to open public session tonight.
Done moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Harrison, seconded by Mr. Bowling. Roll call vote, Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd M. Turner votes yes. Thank you for attending. And we ask you to leave Zoom so that we can lock down our meeting and go into executive session. Thank you. Tiffany, well, beautiful. Brittany? Thank you. Okay. Meeting is locked, no one else can join. We're in executive session. And
Recording, please.
Thank you.